It's six o'clock? Great. Well, welcome to the July 17th Regular City Council meeting. And would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Absent. Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner? Absent. Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak to council on an issue that isn't going, is not on the agenda, we'd ask you to fill out a card. We'd just like to have your name and address and turn it into our city clerk, Cindy. And again, if it's not on the agenda and you would just like to come forward and address the city council, we're certainly welcoming you can do that. The blank forms are there to be filled out. And just bring up to Cindy. So, are there any people that would like to speak to council at this time? Okay. Any council announcements that you'd like to offer? Is everybody plugged in so their buttons are going? No? Okay. We have a Vision Committee on Wednesday. It's at four, still at four, right? We were going to change that, talk about changing that maybe till later. I guess we can discuss that later. And then tomorrow at 4:30 is at the broadband meeting here?
The regional broadband planning meeting is 4:30 here at City Hall.
City Hall. Any other announcements of interest to people? Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Could you, Acting City Manager, Mr. Stevens, would you cover that, please?
Yes. Item 8A is approval of minutes for the Vision Committee meeting on April 17th, the special city council meeting on April 24th and 27th. 8B is approval of the monthly budget summary. 8C is authorized reappointment of Gerald Maloney, Brian Ledoux, and Randy Smith to the Planning Commission with terms expiring July 1st of 2022. 8D, awards bid number 1919, Service Trucks International, and the amount not to exceed 8E is approval of new job description for a senior purchasing technician at Range 57. 8F is authorized city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Fremont County Clerk and Recorder for a coordinated election on November 5th of this year. 8G is ratify and receive and file the list of bills from June 18th to July 1st. 8H is receive and file the list of bills from July 2nd to the 15th. And 8I is a water service contract for the Eve Free Church at 2990 East Main Street.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Are there any additions, corrections, or anybody would like to pull anything? Yes, Mr. Meisner.
I'm not sure what your response to this was that I asked earlier, but in regards to the requested, it's not requested, but the suggested transfer from the savings of the 5 million tank to the truck, they're still mentioning in the letter that that's a second quarter item that...
That it'll happen at the quarterly cleanup that we do.
But is that a dollar amount, not in excess of the minimum amount that's required for preapproval?
Tammy, do you have a response to that?
Yes. So, the reason that we put that in the memo is because we are asking for preapproval for that to happen. This memo should have actually, that was originally presented in second quarter, but we can make that change effective for third quarter. But we're essentially asking for preapproval for the use of those funds now.
What, I guess I, what difference does it make, second or third quarter?
Well, because that would be after the fact, and because of the dollar amount, it exceeds the amount mentioned in ordinance, so it has to be on a, before they spend the money, we have to have approval from council.
Okay. So, we'll approve it now and then get purchased in the third quarter, or?
Right. It's going, well, it's going to be ordered in third quarter. The transfer will be dated for third quarter. You'll see it formally finalized with the third quarter cleanup because we will still, we're going to be coming to council with second quarter cleanup in August.
Any problems with that?
No, not now. That's just not the way it's written.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, number one, I just wanted to thank our clerk. I really like the new format of the minutes, you know, straight to the point, exactly the action items that were taken. It saves a lot of paper. Thank you for that. That's pretty good. On the budget summary, I did have a question on the stormwater fund revenues and expenditures. And we're showing our 8 million in that, on that page, which is next to the last page in the summary. It's showing the certificate of participation amount as income of the eight, eight-some million dollars. And my question is, when we start spending that, down below, we have expenditures, will that just be lumped in with capital expenditures? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, the, perhaps a request, or just maybe just an idea, I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but it might, it might be nice to split those capital outlays in the streets and the water department. Streets have 2A and then other capital or something like that, 2A capital, other capital. And the same way with our water, our stormwater capital outlays, when we spend that money, it'd be nice to see that it's coming from that 8 million some way.
Right. And it will show in that fund that those expenditures are happening out of that fund, and it will show in that statement.
By the reduction in the fund. Yeah, got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to Tammy while she's here?
Well, I might.
Yes, please.
So, I have a couple of questions, but my financial one has to do with the senior purchasing technician. Is that a full-time position?
Yes, it is.
And do you think that their job description will keep them busy full-time?
I think so. There will, they will be in charge of working with all of the departments to coordinate all of the bids, make sure that we're adhering to the purchasing policy, negotiating pricing, and those type of things.
So, they oversee the bid process as well?
Yes, they will be, they will be in charge of that.
For which types of bidding? Does that include like the street department bidding, or stormwater capital project bidding, and things like that?
They will work hand-in-hand with those departments.
And will they also work on enhancing the bidding process to be more open and transparent?
We can, we can have that, yes.
And do you have any anticipation for the cost savings? This could potentially bring the city to justify this added position.
Ryan, you're...
I don't, I don't know that we have any anticipated cost savings from the position. I think, you know, negotiating, you know, some of the contracts, we definitely will be saving money in certain areas, but, you know, for the most part, we want to make sure that we have a control of the bid process and, you know, making sure that we have, that we are looking for those other opportunities to save money where we can.
Okay. May I ask my other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Please.
One of them, even though they aren't in the audience tonight, I did want to express a gratitude to Gerald Maloney, Brian Ledoux, and Randy Smith for putting their applications back in for reappointment to the Planning Commission, and thank them for their service and their continued commitment to Canyon City. And my other question is actually for you, Cindy, for the election process. I know I have this question personally, but I've been getting it from other people as well. When can they come in to see you to start their petitioning to run for office?
August 6th.
August 6th is the date.
And we have pre-pockets up in the lobby that they can pick up at any time for now before the petition packets go out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Meisner?
With the addition, this is probably directed at Ryan. Assuming that the senior purchasing technician is approved, how does that impact the potential change that we were, or the position that we were adding at the police department that was essentially taking care of some of that stuff at the police department?
This is all within the FTEs, the full-time employees that the finance department currently has. So, it's, we're shifting some of those responsibilities from payroll and accounts payable into part-time roles, and that gave us enough space to open up a full-time position for a purchasing position.
But I understood that the...
We're not currently looking to hire the business manager position at the police department.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? I have one, and I hope you don't take it as petty, but I noticed on here, I wish I could make it better, we have paid for Paleo Education Liaison.
I noticed that.
What is it, what I, what is that? It's to, last name is Smith, Paleo Education Liaison.
Oh, that's the guy, I can tell you what that is because I've asked that question a couple of times. That's the reimbursement and the charge for the BLM representative at the museum, is it not?
I would have to confirm that.
I think that's what that is.
That's what Tammy, Tammy's shaking, yes, so yes.
So, his name is Paleo, it's not a paleo diet technician?
Not going there.
I just know that I've asked that question because I couldn't remember it, I think twice.
Yeah, that's, that's what that is. I, I didn't know if it was some kind of diet plan for staff or not, so...
Could be.
I figured that's what it was, but a little humor there. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question. Go ahead. If you're making a motion. I am just kind of wondering if maybe it would be possible to start with that purchasing technician as a part-time and see how needed it is before we commit to a full-time that we can't get rid of, if we don't need a full-time?
I, I think that we're going to have enough to keep them busy. We have a lot of bids, and there are a lot of contracts to, that could be negotiated. Tammy, do you have any additional thoughts on that?
Because I think it would be easier to move up, but once you hire full-time, you can't really go...
Yeah, I think, I think the other challenge might be finding a part-time payroll, or a part-time budget, purchasing person.
With that position, we could also look at it, you know, which we could still have the issues with getting it filled. Right now, part-time can work up to like 29 hours a week. Full-time is over 30 hours a week. If we needed to have it posted at between 30 and 40 hours a week and have those hours vary as to when they're actually working, you know, if that, you know, helps with council's concerns on that, because then you could fluctuate as needed. So, when we're having the days when there's seven or eight bids opening all at once and having to do the bid, helping with the bid tabulation sheets and get all of that done, they might have to work a few more hours where other times they may not, so...
Okay. So, really, full-time could be anything from 30 to 40, and maybe that could just be stipulated that you're not guaranteed 40 every week? It could be times that there's less?
Technically, we could, yes.
Technically, yeah.
Okay.
We'd have to post up to 40 hours a week when you did it.
Right. I think, you know...
You might still struggle, though, finding the position.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's going to be a, from an advertising standpoint of trying to get qualified people for the purchasing position, I think it's probably going to need to be a full-time position. There, there will be a 90-day...
Six-month.
Six-month probation period.
Are there other duties within the accounting department if needed that they could be kept busy if...
Absolutely. I think there's always, there's always work that can be done.
Right. Our fixed asset tracking is one of the areas where we could always use some help within the department.
And that, do they do the purchasing for the library and the museum and those departments as well?
They would coordinate with all of the, with all the departments, yes.
Yeah. All city departments they'll be working with.
So, they'd have a pretty extensive knowledge with numbers in accounting and purchasing.
Right.
Mr. Kins?
You know, based on the conversation we've got going on right now with regards to concern of part-time, full-time, and then the mention of 30 hours in a sentence is full-time, going to 40, what I'm looking at is this, if there's not enough work, if we go for a 30-hour full-time employee, how does that affect that, that price range, you know? Because I can't imagine us starting somebody at the salary that we're looking at if they're only going to be working 30 hours a month.
The salary that's posted is based on 40 hours a week, so the 30-hour a week would adjust that down. So, you would have additional savings that would not cost the full amount, because we had advertised it as a, an hourly rate or now, a range that it would be posted at.
So, basically, when, when we do interviews with whoever applies, we're going to let them know that they're going to be working 40 hours a week, and that 30-hour period has no effect?
If they're only working 30 hours, they'll only be paid 30 hours. If they're working 40, they'll be paid 40.
Okay. So, then back to my question, how does that affect the, the pay range that we're looking at with regard to starting and to the max? Can we say that we can start somebody, and if it's only going to work 30 hours a week, the starting salary that's being mentioned?
So, so when we post it, we'll post it as an hourly rather than the annual salary. So, it'll be an hourly rate.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Okay. Second, Mr. Hammack. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? None? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran? Aye. Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. And part of the agenda, we moved the administrator's report earlier on in the meeting because it's always an exciting report. And so, could we have the, do you have a report first, Mr. Acting Administrator?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, you, you mentioned earlier that there, it's been some conversation among council members of possibly moving committee meetings to 6:00 PM. I, I just wanted to ask at this time if that's something that council does want to do.
Comments? Anyone?
If you would like me here, then...
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, we have several professionals in city council. We have a younger group, and so we need to accommodate to their working schedule, and I'm happy to do that. I think having a quorum is important, and of course, we want Amanda here and Jim as well.
And Dolly.
Any other, any other comments? Well, let's start with Frank.
Well, I look at it this way. If we go to six o'clock, maybe there's more of an opportunity for those people who haven't been able to apply now can apply because, you know, their work schedule, getting home and all this other stuff. My only concern would be, if we look at doing that, then I think we need to also look at being pretty consistent as to when we have these meetings starting at six o'clock, that we don't have to bring our sleeping bags.
You mean efficient?
But like I say, it does have, it does have its advantages with regards to recruiting other folks that, you know, do work in, you know, out in the community.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Amanda?
I think, kind of playing off that, I think it'd allow more of the public to attend the meetings. We don't see a big turnout for those four o'clock meetings. I think it's hard for people to come when, you know, four o'clock, most, most jobs go till five, so I think we'd see a larger turnout of audience.
Good point. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I already made my comment.
I too would have to concur with both of them. It is kind of tough even for me, and I know my boss pretty well, but, see, well, my boss is the public, and six o'clock works pretty good, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Mr. Hammack?
Yes, I, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Well, I had proposed this when I was first elected three years ago, and it didn't seem to float, but, and my point then was, prior to being on council, it was very difficult for me to participate in those meetings because they're at four o'clock, particularly if you're working during the day. You, you just can't do it, so that, that's my point.
Okay. How do we do that, then? Just, we have agreement and go forward? Do we need a resolution or anything?
Yeah, I think we, we might need to make some changes, but we'll, we'll work on, on the logistics of that, and then, so the meeting on Wednesday will stay at four o'clock, and then going forward from there, we'll move to a six o'clock meeting.
Okay. Thank you all. Any other comments, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, we, we, Dina Svetlik with the Community Development Team is working on the Urban Land Institute, putting on a, a really nice workshop, August 15th and August 16th over at the Abbey. It's the Healthy Places Workshop. She's lining up some very good panelists for that event, and I think some of those invitations have already gone out to council. I just want to make the, the public aware that, you know, we're always continuing to try and better the community and find other alternatives for development.
Do you know who the invite list was? I know I got invited.
Yeah, there, there are different, different pockets within the community, FEDC, you know, certainly, you know, other governmental agencies, you know, different divisions of the council of governments have been invited as well, and then possible developers and people who are doing development within the community, as, as well as the, the panelists and experts, the subject matter experts will be coming from all across the state.
Wow. Sounds very interesting. Thank you.
That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Anyone else? Let's move into a public hearing. I like to open a public hearing. Glasses here, number 10. It's a public hearing to consider an application for a hotel and restaurant license for Los Campos, Oscar Cardenas and Eduardo Ramos applicants. The location is 1332 Royal Gorge Boulevard, and could we have a staff report?
Now, city clerk, Cindy?
They have turned in all the required paperwork. Everything's in line. They had the 120 people on the petition, and they have everything ready to go to the state.
Okay. Are either the gentleman in, present, I know you're both here, would you mind coming up to the podium? Introduce yourself, please. Give yourself a plug for your location.
My name is Oscar Cardenas, and I'm one of the persons who are from the, in the Los Campos Mexican restaurant, and we are trying to see if we can work on the liquor license.
Who's the gentleman with you there?
My name is Eduardo Ramos. I'm Spanish.
I've seen you before. Okay. Who would like to go forward with these applicants?
I don't have that.
Jim?
I don't see him.
Oh.
Send your packet.
Mr. Meisner, go right ahead.
Thank you, and welcome. We just have a couple of formal questions to start with. Are you familiar with the Colorado liquor code?
Yes, we are.
This says is. Will there be a copy of the liquor code in your establishment?
Yes.
How many employees do you expect to have?
I don't know. That depends, and you guys, I believe, I mean, how busy we get, I mean, but we've been thinking between five for 10.
And how are those employees going to be trained on the liquor code?
We, have in mind, we haven't get before, but we, to take the class, you guys, I believe you guys have been here to, I mean, let us know all the things are, I mean, we need to know to be able to sell, to sell liquor for a person, and all those things.
You submitted a petition, petition in support of your application. How did you acquire the signatures on the petition?
I didn't understand the question.
How'd you get your signatures?
How?
Well, we just asking to people if they want to agree that we have liquor license. People like to have a drink with his food. That's like the way we do. We just asking, say, they, they wanted to us have alcohol, and they say, yes, they, they agree they want it.
You had the, the sign-up sheet at the restaurant?
Yeah, we had the, yeah.
And some other ones, I mean, the ones, the people coming to the restaurant.
What efforts, if any, did you make to contact residents and business owners in the immediate vicinity of your proposed establishment to discuss your liquor license the immediate vicinity of your proposed establishment to discuss your liquor license application?
In other words, did you talk to, like, say, Donardo's, the restaurant that does breakfast and lunch and stuff like that, did you talk to any of those folks, you know, to give them information, what you're planning on doing, so that if they would have any objections to that, they can express those things, so that's what we're looking at. So did you do stuff like that?
What was their responses?
It's like, it's kinda hard to me to understand about that microphone, so it's gonna get in troubles a little bit. It's like, more like, how the people sign about it, or no?
No. The question is, is whether you talked to the people around your restaurant and asked them how they felt about you getting a liquor license?
Your neighbor businesses.
Like Donardo's, did you talk to the owners of Donardo's?
Donardo's, I mean, everybody around, I mean, we went to, and they, they said it was okay, I mean, you know, so for some people, they wanna have a drink before the meal, you know, and people don't mind, that's what they said.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado liquor code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your establishment, and the result in suspension or revocation of your liquor license?
We are.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
The question I have, do we still offer the classes that we, in the past? Okay.
Ms. Smith?
Have any of you in the past, your employees, wherever they worked, and that attended any of those type of classes, and if not, then I would strongly suggest that you give it with the city clerk, and find out when the next class is gonna start, so you can have those folks, as many as you can, attend those classes, and that'll give you the benefit of all the knowledge that comes out with regards to all the liquor laws, especially now that a lot of it has changed with the new liquor codes and that. Okay, yeah. I think he take it once already, but we, I mean, I wanna do it, and have, I mean, some of the employees too, I mean, to get it to, that way they can have a little more idea.
They have had three or four of their witnesses already through the class, as they've worked at other establishments.
Okay, good.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I would just reiterate, making sure you have that training for your employees. I did have a little bit of concern with the petition, because being a responsible liquor license holder requires a lot of attention to detail, and on the petition, it's very clearly highlighted that the people to sign must live within Canyon City, and probably almost fifty percent of those who signed did not live in Canyon City, and so for me, that's a little bit of a red flag. Are you really paying attention to these details and going to take the requirements for this liquor license seriously and hold to it completely? Do you have an answer for me?
So, so that's why we do it again, right? No, the signs, because people, it was not, because we get the signs, and people, it was not the limit, and the citizen, we do it again.
They had to redo it. The first time they turned it in, they did have a lot of out-of-town people, so they took a second petition, and the second part was Canyon City people. I think they had had it up on their counter for people to sign, and as they were working, people were signing it without them being up there, and so the second part, they made sure somebody was up there, talking to more people as they were signing and getting Canyon City people to sign it.
Okay, so the one that we have in our package?
It should, they were all combined at the end, unfortunately, and they look the same. I should've numbered them twice, that was my fault.
The second set still doesn't have a really good track record.
Yeah, none of them did.
I mean, when you look, what it looks to me like is the second set is a little different format of form, it looks, the last five pages, and the signatures that are on that, the first one is just two out of resident, the next page is ten in, five out, the next page is eleven in, four out, eight in, seven out, four in, one unknown, then there's a, looks like a page of handmade, nine in, ten out, so...
Well, and this is, I'm not trying to give them a reason for what the way it's happening, but I look at it this way, you got a restaurant that's on the highway, and you got a lot of people traveling on here, and it's a new restaurant, so you're gonna have a lot of folks, they're gonna try it, just because it's a new restaurant and all that, and because they wanna try it, and they get the treatment that they're getting, that could be a reason why, you know, I know I would sign something for somebody if I went to a place like that that was in the county, and then they want me to sign because I enjoyed their food, so the fact that I'm not a, wouldn't be in the county, I don't, I don't put a whole lot of bearing on that, okay, because there's a whole lot of signatures on there. To me, what that represents is, there's a whole lot of people that think these folks have a nice establishment.
Well, and just to remind council, the criteria that you're looking at is the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petitions, so I think you're looking at, are there enough people that are in Canyon City and say, yes, I'm okay with this? Is that sufficient in your mind to grant a new liquor license? That's the criteria that's in front of you. I understand your point about making sure the right people are signing, but that unfortunately, probably not part of your criteria in granting a new license.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Back to a legal question I've asked before, but what's the legal criteria for determining yea or nay in terms of this application?
I missed part of your question, I'm sorry.
What's the legal criteria for us determining yea or nay in terms of the application?
So you're looking at the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, you don't define neighborhood in Canyon City, so it's the city of Canyon City, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petitions, remonstrations or otherwise, or other reasonable restrictions that you may place upon a neighborhood, which you haven't done. So that's the criteria for granting a new license. In addition, you're looking at someone's good moral character to make sure they can be licensed under liquor code. I haven't heard anything or seen anything in the application that would give evidence that they're not of good moral character. That's your criteria.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions of the applicants? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would ask then for a motion. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm gonna try not to butcher this. I move that we approve the hotel and restaurant license for Los Campos. I think that's it.
Got the address?
Thirteen thirty-two Royal Gorge Boulevard.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a second, thank you. Any discussion on that motion and second?
I just wanna say really quick, your food is delicious. I love eating there. You guys are doing a fabulous job, and I hope more people find out how good your food is.
Thank you.
Amanda, what's your favorite thing on the menu?
Oh, their street tacos are so good.
That's what I asked him for the meeting, and that's what he said, street tacos is the specialty.
I feel as if I've lost this motion.
This is important conversation.
It's important. I did ask for a discussion, you're bet. Okay, the motion is made and seconded, and would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you, gentlemen, and best of luck. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Okay, so I'm gonna do, open another public hearing, and, well, not a public hearing, yeah, yeah. Would I do all these at the same time to cover the zoning and everything else? Is that what we're intending here?
Yeah, I think your staff report covers it all, yes, so I would just go ahead, take them after the close of the public hearing by A, B, and C.
Okay. A vote on each one, A, B, and C?
Yeah, when you're actually discussing and deciding separately, but right now you can introduce them as one.
Okay, we're going to introduce, open a public hearing for new creations in annexation and zoning. A is consideration adoption by title only Resolution Twenty-One, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen, entitled. A resolution making certain findings of fact regarding the proposed annexation of a parcel of unincorporated territory located in the county of Fremont County, new creations in annexation. B, consideration of first reading by title only of ordinance sixteen, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen, entitled, an ordinance of the city of Canyon City approving and accomplishing the annexation of certain unincorporated lands commonly known as new creations in annexation. Two, the city of Canyon City, Colorado, and C, consideration and first reading by title only of ordinance seventeen, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen, is an ordinance of the city of Canyon City zoning, concern, certain property recently annexed into the city of Canyon City, new creation into annexation. And at this time, could we have a staff report from Patrick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Our first public hearing this evening is a combined annexation and zoning request. This is for the property known as New Creations Inn, and it is located at twenty-nine ninety East Main Street. The subject property is a zero-point-nine-seven-one acre parcel located on the south side of East Main Street. The property is not currently within the city limits, but it has sufficient contiguity to existing municipal boundaries to meet the statutory requirements for annexation. The property was originally developed in the late nineteen forty's as a motor court motel. As a result, it features several buildings on site surrounding a main office building. One of the residential wings of the property is currently undergoing extensive renovations. The current use of the property, though, through the neighboring Evangelical Free Church, is as multifamily residential to aid homeless individuals and families who are attempting to reestablish themselves. In terms of the request to annex, the property, the aforementioned Evangelical Free Church, submitted an annexation petition to the city in the format required by state statute in May. Council, you may recall, adopted the petition at their June third, at your June third meeting, and set the public hearing date for this evening, July fifteenth. The proposed annexation is within a district established by council in two thousand nine as a priority annexation area. These areas are shown in red on the map in front of you. This policy established, was established partially because there were areas which would logically annex to the city, and partially because the annexation of these areas would regularize the city's municipal boundaries and facilitate delivery of municipal services such as police protection and road maintenance. Now, as mentioned on a previous slide, this parcel has sufficient connection to existing municipal boundaries to meet the one-six continuity requirement specified in state statute, and as it is less than ten acres in area, it will not require the applicant to submit an annexation impact report to Fremont County. Staff therefore finds that the annexation of this parcel is consistent with community goals. Now concurrent with the request to annex the property is a request to zone the property. As council is aware, all parcels within Canyon City are required to have a zoning district which is recognized by the Canyon City Municipal Code. This property is located along the East Main Street corridor. Properties along this corridor which are previously annexed into the city have been given a C, general commercial district designation. This designation is also appropriate for the subject property, given that it has historically been used for commercial functions. Even today, given that it is being used for multifamily purposes, multifamily residential is a permitted use in the C, general commercial district. Now, continuing, sorry, continuing with the analysis of the zoning request, note that although not applicable to this zoning request, the property currently enjoys a B, business zoning district in unincorporated Fremont County, which is roughly the equivalent of our C, general commercial within Canyon City. A commercial zoning at this location would also be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Although this plan has not been updated since two thousand one, the comprehensive plan identified the entirety of the East Main Street corridor as a future commercial area. Finally, the C, general commercial district zoning designation will continue the precedent which was established with the annexation and zoning of the NNS subdivision and the Great Western Storage properties, both of which are recent annexations to the city. Planning Commission considered this matter at a public hearing they conducted at the regular meeting of June twenty-sixth. Following deliberations, they voted unanimously to recommend council approve both the annexation and zoning request for the new creations in property. With that, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the, following a public hearing where council can hear public testimony regarding the proposed annexation and zoning, that council adopt Resolution Number Twenty-One, Series of Two Thousand and Nineteen, citing findings of fact concerning the proposed annexation of the new creations property. Staff and the Planning Commission also recommend that council adopt ordinance number sixteen, Series of Two Thousand and Nineteen, approving the annexation of the new creations in property into Canyon City. And finally, concerning the zoning request, Planning Commission and staff also recommend that council adopt ordinance number seventeen, Series of Two Thousand and Nineteen, zoning the new creations in property to C, general commercial district. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try and help answer them. Present to speak on behalf of this request is DeeDee Clement, who's representing the applicant, James Watson of the Evangelical Free Church, as well as the consultant on the project, Matt Koch of Cornerstone Survey.
Thank you, Patrick. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, Patrick. So, the, looking at this slide right here, actually what we're, what we're doing is creating an island of city property surrounded by county property, is that correct? So, let me, let me ask the question a different way, that may help. So, we're looking at the current Canyon City boundary is the, is the, the bold stripe running down Highway fifty, is that correct, or is it right there on?
The areas shown in gray on that map are currently within the incorporated limits of the city. The areas in red are the priority annexation areas, and you'll note that the Highway fifty corridor, which is approximately that line right there, south of it, predominantly those areas that have been identified in the master plan as potential commercial areas have not, the bulk of them have not annexed. We would very much like to annex them, we have, we've had a number of conversations with property owners along that corridor. The dilemma is that Oil Creek Ditch happens to run along the south side of that East Main Street corridor, and it's showing up as having its own particular parcel designation, which means those properties that have Oil Creek Ditch running between them and Main Street do not currently have sufficient contiguity to annex, and they're trying to work that out with the ditch company to potentially get that designated as an easement on their own property. Oil Creek Ditch veers south and goes around the boundary of this property so that it does have sufficient contiguity. So, to your question about whether we're creating an island, I would say it's an extension, a logical extension of the current boundary that the city has along the East Highway fifty corridor, and that it will be built upon in the future as we get the resolution of the Oil Creek Ditch issue resolved.
Okay, the, so would you place your cursor over the fifty, on the Highway fifty, on, no, not there, on the top picture?
On the top, right here?
Yes, so right there. So that's my question, is that the boundary of Canyon City, or is that where you have your cursor now, the boundary of Canyon City?
That red line right there, actually it's orange if you look at it on our GIS maps, that is the current boundary of the city.
Okay, so the, my follow-up question on that, does that mean then that the East Main Street in front of that property, between Highway fifty and the subject property, will that, that's ours to maintain already right now?
I believe that is correct, yes. We do own the property.
Or seed on.
Okay, that was, those were my questions.
East Main Street is ours, we, yep.
Better be, we spent money in Kansas.
That's right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, good point.
Two A.
Okay, any other, Mr. Meisner?
Patrick, the lot just west of the proposed site, it's hard to tell here, is, that's, yeah, right there, that lot is not city, correct?
That is not currently within the city boundary, no.
So the only continuity we have is via East Main Street?
Correct. Now, I should point out, the same was true when we annexed the Great Western subdivision and the NNS subdivision. The current boundary is the south edge of the Main Street right of way.
Ms. Cochran?
So it all came about because of the water tap, correct?
Correct, and I believe Adam is here, may be able to answer questions about the service agreement.
And keep it old.
Adam stepped down. Oh, he abandoned me.
Yeah, but this annexation was initiated by the city.
Well, so that's kinda where, how does it benefit us? Will it make it easier to annex in more pieces with that?
It will, because as properties on either side come in, they will have contiguity defined on two edges rather than just one.
Okay.
So if the motel next door, you would have two sides that would be contiguous. And that's interesting about the Oil Creek Ditch, I always thought that was just an easement, but it's actually...
We thought it was an easement too, but when we got title work on some of these and discovered it wasn't, we realized that there was a problem that needed to be resolved, so we've been quietly working with those property owners to get that fixed.
Just an interesting aside, I used to own that motel with another individual, and I learned a very good lesson about that. I should not own a motel. But I was told, they came by and cleaned the ditch and threw the dirt up on the bank, and they said that you have to clean that up, we just have an easement, and that's exactly what I was told. And I spent money with an attorney to find out they can do that, by the way, so. Okay, any other questions? Then I would entertain a, so we just do, we'll do a motion for, we're going to go ahead and start out doing a motion for A. Could I hear, or should we do A, B, and C in one motion?
Of course.
Okay. Okay, the recommend, should I read the recommendation of action, or do I need to do that at all?
No, I'm okay.
Everybody has that in their file, so why, I mean, I don't mind, but...
So, yeah, I think you're gonna need a motion for each individual item.
All right, let's go forward then, and I'm gonna ask for a motion on A, and this is the adoption of Resolution Twenty-One, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen.
Did you close the public hearing?
Pardon? Oh, I need to go, I'm hereby gonna close the public meeting and ask for, it's like I've never done this before, I will close the public meeting and ask for a motion as follows. We're gonna ask for a motion on A, which is consideration adoption by title of Resolution Twenty-One of Two Thousand and Nineteen, so I need a motion for that. Who would like to make it? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve Resolution Twenty-One, Series of Two Thousand and Nineteen. Second?
Mr. Meisner, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Meisner?
Somebody help me find a copy of that in our minutes. I mean, in our book, is it in there? Yeah.
It's right after the...
It's right after the staff report?
Yeah, it's page two of the staff report.
Exhibit A.
It should be attachment A to the staff report.
Here it is, right here.
You made the motion, Mr. Meisner.
I know, but that's why I wanted to...
Okay. Made and seconded? Any discussion?
I seconded.
Mr. Yockes, second. Any other, any more discussion? Would you call a roll, please, on A?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, B, eleven B, consideration of, and first reading by title only of ordinance sixteen, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen, I ask for a motion on that. Mr. Yockes?
Members of council, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number sixteen, Series of Two Thousand and Nineteen, on first reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Cochran, second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
I found it.
You are no longer lost, in other words. Good.
No, I'm not going that far.
Okay, would, no discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, it dawns on me, we have Mr. Koch and Ms. Clements here, would... Okay, it dawns on me, we have Mr. Koch and Ms. Clemens here, would, would we want them to come to the podium for questions, or are we just gonna let them slide? What? He's shaking his head, okay. Sorry. 11C, in consideration, this is for Ordinance 17, Series 2019, I would entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cochran?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 17, Series of 2019 at first reading.
Second.
Mr. Hammack, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you. Now, you understand that B and C, that's our first reading, we'll have a second reading on those two portions, okay? Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Ms. Clemens. Mr. Meisner?
It's probably not relevant, but is. You had mentioned that one of those units was undergoing extensive renovation?
Yes.
Yeah, on the very back. Uh, how does that affect the permitting process?
Well, the permits were issued in Fremont County. Upon annexation, our building department would take over the inspections as the work concludes, unless they're done before then.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. In case there were any questions, it's always nice to have the resources and the audience.
I was really hoping the council would really grill you on something, but I guess not.
Welcome to our city.
Yes.
Yeah. Mountain OC, man, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That's a nice-looking structure you have going out there, and it'll be very good for people. Thank you again. All right, we're going to go to number 12. It's an ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, amending section 17.16.040, 17.16.070, 17.16.080, 17.16.090, 17.16.00, 17.16.120, 18.04020, 18.04.040, 18.04.050, and 18.04.07 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Vesting Rights and the PUD Approval Process. Again, I guess we throw it back to Patrick for discussion, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may recall that at your June 5th, General Government Committee meeting, we discussed with council the concept of changing our approval process for both final plat, preliminary and final plats, as well as preliminary and final PUDs, to make the final in both of those cases administrative in nature, which could potentially save 60 to 90 days of processing time for applicants, provided that a finding could be made that it's substantially compliant with what was approved at preliminary plan. And of course, the key to this was having the approvals associated with the vested rights be granted as part of the preliminary plan approval, and that preliminary approval would be valid for a period of one calendar year from the date of approval, upon which a final plat application could be submitted. So, what you are seeing is the ordinance that would make that true for the PUD application, the PUD process. Per your request, the resolution went to Planning Commission that modified Title 16, Appendix 8 of Title 16, on the preliminary and final plat process at their hearing, at their meeting on June 26th. Planning Commission did unanimously vote to approve that. They also voted that council, to recommend that council approve Ordinance 15 before you here tonight. I didn't make a prepared presentation, because obviously this is more conceptual in nature than an actual land use application, but obviously I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Patrick. Ms. Smith, are you trending that way?
Patrick, I know you've put a lot of time and work into this, and I really appreciate it. We are very happy for you to bring this forward to make the permitting process a lot faster and smoother for our developers, and we're anxious to see what else you have up your sleeve to help us become more business-friendly. My one question is, is under recommendation action, it says to conduct a public hearing. Is that something that we are doing today, or is that something that needs to be conducted in the future?
I, I believe that because this is an ordinance, there is a requirement for a public hearing, but I'll defer to Catherine on that.
I don't know what exactly you're referring to. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
So, on page two of the staff report, it says recommended action, and usually it tells us the motion that we need to make, and it says conduct a public hearing on Ordinance 15, Series of 2019, and approve the ordinance on first reading.
Okay.
So, it's tonight, that public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, it's just that I haven't seen it like that before.
Okay, so I should have stated that as the opening of public hearing, I'm not gonna repeat all those numbers and everything, and-
That was so impressive.
It was, wasn't it? So, so this is about, we are now in a public hearing, and we have had the staff report and, and discussions, and questions to Patrick? Mr. Meisner?
I just trust, Patrick, that you're simplifying this process, 'cause I don't fully understand the changes necessarily, or the new process or the old, but I trust that you're moving us in the right direction, and I also congratulate you for taking the effort to do so.
Well, thank you very much.
I might add that I, in another state, in another lifetime, I did a couple subdivisions where they had these vesting rights, and, and very similar to what you're doing here. And I left here and went there, and I couldn't believe how, how easy that was. I mean, it wasn't, it was very straightforward, and once it was approved preliminarily, there was no come back later and we need this, we need that. It was done, and that's what's called vesting. And I think developers like we were at that time, really, I really appreciated that.
Well, it, it helps to build certainty into the process, and for the development community, certainty is always a good thing.
Yeah, when you're talking sometimes millions of dollars, and you get toward the end, and someone says, "By the way," you don't wanna hear that, that equates dollars and cents. So, the vesting principle that has, that I was accustomed, that I got involved in was very, very good, so.
So, if I could just follow up on something?
Sure.
So, there is something I wanna point out that this ordinance does, and I just wanna make sure you, you are aware of this and that you're making an informed decision. So, by simplifying the process on the final plat, final PDD, or PUD process, and having it go to staff only, it eliminates the ability of the applicant to obtain vested rights under state law and under the process in your code, because that process requires a decision by the governing body, notice in a public hearing. So, if, and, and for those of you maybe who aren't as familiar with the vested rights concept, that protects them against, it's basically a zoning change, that would prevent them from doing what they had previously been approved to do. So, let's say the most extreme example is they wanna have a residential subdivision, and they go through this process, and they go through final plat, and they get their final plat for the residential subdivision, and the next week, city council changes it to commercial zoning, and they can't have a residential subdivision for whatever reason. So, if they had obtained vested rights, they'd be protected under the process. So, this eliminates their ability to do that, because staff can't grant vested rights. One of the things you could do is give applicants a choice. They can, if they want vested rights, they can go through the public hearing process, and my suggestion is that it only be at the council level, not the Planning Commission council level, 'cause it's only council. Or they can just go through the administrative process and just quickly be done and not have vested rights. Now, the chances of council doing what I just described, rezoning the week after they approve a subdivision, unlikely. And vested rights typically are only granted for three years anyway, but I just want you to understand what this is doing, and it's taking away that process from an applicant. So, I just wanna lay that out for you.
So, Catherine, if we did choose to keep that alternative for developer to choose which process to use, what, what would we need to do tonight?
You can either, I mean, you can, you can approve this and ask for me to insert that process back in there, or you can table, table it for, table first reading and have it come back with that language in there, so you could see what it looks like. But it would only, it would be solely at the option, option of the applicant, it would not be the, something the city would make a choice on, if that makes sense.
Well.
Go ahead, Mr. Meisner.
At what point would the, would the applicant make that decision?
When they submit their final plat, they would be making a choice whether to go through the administrative approval process or seek vested rights.
Okay.
The, the vested rights, the preliminary plan, the year-long, that's, that would be in there no matter what. This doesn't change that, so.
Does that make sense?
Yes. What, what Catherine is saying is, there's the potential that council could change rules on an applicant subsequent to a final, the recordation of a final plat or final PUD. Again, as Catherine characterized it, I don't know how likely it is that a council would do that, particularly after construction might have begun out there, but that, that is a risk she's wanted to make sure you're aware of.
And there, and not to get too like into the dense world of vested rights, but there is a, there is a common law doctrine of vested rights, so an applicant could say, "Well, I have common law vested rights even though I didn't go through the statutory process." But the statutory process just solidifies it for them, so they don't have to make that argument. So, I just wanted to lay that out for you.
Okay. I, I understand. I never had that in what we did. It was in California, and that explanation now scares me a little bit, but I'm already done, but-
Well, I tried to give an extreme example. I mean, it's, from what I understand, you haven't had a whole lot of vested rights requests come through, so it's not something you've seen a lot. And so, and according to some of your older staff, maybe you weren't actually complying with the statutory process, 'cause it's actually requires notice on the backend too, public notice, so there's lots of steps to go through, and so I'm not sure the city was really following that. But that aside, I just want you to know that that's gone in this current ordinance.
So, Mr. Mayor, why do you think they have vested rights in California?
Well, because we were talking about, I looked at it very simply as that there was millions of dollars here going to be spent on a property that I wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that it didn't come in later, as I've happened and had here when I left here that said, "Oh, by the way, you're not gonna get a CO, we want new sidewalks," but I don't have that in my budget. The one, the first one I did that I was introduced to, it was done. And with certainty, that's what we could do right there. It never came up that that town, whatever, was in McKinleyville, whatever changed that zoning. It was residential, period.
Yeah, so it protects you from a change in regulation, is what it ultimately does, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In the spirit of being business-friendly, I would like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance 15, Series of 2019, but with an amendment for the second reading to allow the developer the choice to choose either the new PUD process or the original process we now have that includes vested rights options.
Any question?
Is that a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Questions? So, you will bring that on second reading?
If we approve it.
If we approve it, you bring it on second reading, right?
I will, we, you will have a revised ordinance in front of you for second reading.
Okay, so the, the public hearing is closed, we've done the motion, we've had the discussion. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you, Patrick.
We have red line version?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Patrick, appreciate it. Number 13, consideration adoption, excuse me, by title only of Resolution 19, Series 2019 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado Approving the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Doritos Restaurant LLC for a Portion of the Property Located at 232 West, 233 Main Street, Canyon City, Colorado." Could we have a report from our acting administrator?
Yes, the clock tower itself has been donated to the city. This is considering the purchase of the parking lots and lots surrounding the, the tower. This is part of our downtown plan to acquire more parking and a possible plaza. It's also part of the River Corridor Master Plan, and just wanna put that before council for consideration.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Stevens?
I do have a question. Ryan, what is the initial vision for this piece of property? I know you've been having some conversations with council, what are you seeing?
I, I think in the short term, you know, probably remain as parking, but I think at some point we'll, we'll wanna bring it forward in a vision committee and actually have some discussion around the future of this particular site. But in the short term, it'll remain as, as downtown parking.
Any other questions of Mr. Stevens? I'm gonna ask for a motion, and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hammack?
I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 19, Series of 2019 on first reading for the purchase of certain real property.
Second.
Is this first reading or just we can, we are adopting this tonight?
This is resolution.
This is a resolution, so just one time. So, this is a resolution, and we have first and a second. Amanda, thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Mayor?
I would just like to point out that we do have a savings account in the Canyon City's general fund, just kind of waiting for opportunities for us to acquire properties that are part of executing our vision and master plans, and also for those that are in the best interest for the Canyon City as a whole. And this particular piece of property does meet several of those criterias, as it provides downtown parking. It also is an adherence with our master plan with the Centennial Park and connecting Centennial Park, Veterans Park to the downtown. It's really popular right now to have little pocket parks downtown to bring gathering places for potential shoppers and families to come and spend time downtown and hopefully do some shopping while they're there. And, and also our downtown merchants have been really, kinda, I don't wanna use the word begging, but really wanting to have some public restrooms available for the public, and that could potentially be a site for that. And as we're looking for the, the future of that site, I personally, besides having some downtown parking, would love to see a little gathering place, but particularly around that clock tower, so that that clock tower makes sense, instead of just sitting in the middle of a parking lot, that it, it has a, a foundation around it of park benches and maybe a little fountain or something that helps enhance our downtown experience.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion, Ms. Cochran?
Yeah, Ryan, immediately, any money need to be spent on that to keep it parking, or pretty much until we decide what we're doing with it, it can kinda just sit?
Yeah, we, we might spend some money to stripe it and optimize the parking.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion on that motion? Let's mean second, Mr. Meisner?
Hey, does it go to the, I noticed today, does it go to the alley, or does it just go to that fence?
I believe it goes all the way to the alley.
'Cause there's a fence back there.
Yeah.
Well, the semi-trailer is, that's part of the property.
Yeah. It's all, yeah, it's all one parcel.
Yeah, they all went to the alley, to my knowledge. Okay. Any more discussion? There we go, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
With a thank you to Greg Drito, and in honor of his father, I also give an aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Number 14, consideration adoption by title only of Resolution 20, Series 2019 entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Establishing an Additional Meeting for the General Government Committee." Could we have a report from Mr. Stevens?
As we discussed at the city council retreats, we're adding an additional committee meeting to have more work sessions with council and staff to try and move many of the initiatives that we have going on forward, and give us an opportunity to work closer together. I would ask that when you make the motion to please make an amendment from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM based off the discussion earlier today.
Any questions of Mr. Stevens? Mr. Meisner?
I thought in the, in the meeting that we had decided on a different name than general government, but I've missed some meetings, has something changed?
Like a workshop, or?
Well, yeah, we, we had talked about, yeah.
Who's "we"?
Possibly, well, at that meeting at the council retreat. We had talked about possibly naming it something different. I, I don't know that we came up with anything creative, but, you know.
you know.
You could just call them regular work sessions of city council.
That's very exciting.
Would you, would the pleasure council change the name, or can we, are we gonna get stuck on that?
Yeah, Ryan, you promised us something really snazzy.
I, I believe I did, but I think, you know, as we look at all these committees, we're, you know, I, I don't know that it makes any sense to have a different name, because we're discussing general government business at most of these meetings.
That's the way I took it as well. If you have agenda items, or if a director has an item, then I, we would look forward to bringing that in there, but it is general government discussions.
You're saying that general government discussions are not snazzy and exciting?
I just have a quick question for clarification. This is in addition to our already twice-a-month Wednesday meetings, correct?
Correct. So this will add a third meeting, a third committee meeting.
Wednesday, at 6:00.
At 6:00.
Okay.
And I don't think there's an obligation for every council member to attend that if it's not possible.
Well, and then it also says we're necessary, so, it doesn't necessarily mean we'll always have one every time, but-
Probably will.
Yeah. We're a busy, we're a busy group.
Based on the, the projects and the number of items that we have, we have quite a bit to keep us busy for a while.
Yes. Mr. Meisner?
What's the, we're talking about a third meeting, but I thought it was the third week also, or is that not the case? Is it like-
Is it in between the two?
This will be in between.
So now we have first week, second week, and third week.
Because we, we already have the vision committee, which is the third week.
I see it now, thank you.
Any questions? Daniel would ask for a motion, and a second. Mr. Jaquez?
Mayor, members of council, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 20, Series 219, with the amendment with regards to the timeframe from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Cochran, second, thank you. Any discussion on that motion, and a second? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Jaquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, very good. Well, we're getting, getting very close to adjourned. I would like to, I hope, if Caitlin is listening, that she heals quickly and returns to us, and so we'd like to see her soon. Any questions, or any answers, or anything from council? Second readings? Nothing? Then we're adjourned.
Mayor, I would like to point out that we are adjourned in a special honor for Dwayne Meisner, Jim Meisner's son, and give, extend our condolences and love to Jim and his family at this time.
Yeah, thank you.